The hour has come. Everyone is in their chairs. That's good. It's like at school, right?
Is your microphone on?
What? I think so. I should talk, speak into it, right? That's ironic to have you, having you remind me, isn't it? But I appreciate it. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick. Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
President Weil.
Here.
Vice President Ruff.
Here.
Clerk Shanahan.
Here.
Member Griffin.
Here.
Member Whipple.
Here.
Superintendent Cantwell.
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Knox.
Here.
We have two quorums. Very good. Sorry that Bill couldn't join us. Randy, you want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Thank you, Mayor. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Attorney has said that I should announce publicly that I have to leave around 7:00 o'clock.
Okay. And any other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I could. As a prerequisite to this meeting, it was determined by the council that because there's an action before the Historic Preservation Commission, that there be no discussion tonight about the landmarking issue of part of Chaparral Building. And I just wanted to let the audience, as well as the members of this council, know that despite that, the superintendent provided what I think was a lengthy letter. He provided a lengthy letter, but I just want to let everyone know that once I saw what the subject matter was, I did not read it. So it seemed to me that that letter was being given to us because he said someone on the board may want to bring that issue up, yet it's clearly something that will not be discussed, nor, and it's not because we necessarily don't want to, it's inappropriate. Because if whatever happens at the HPC happens to be appealed to the council, then any discussions that we have or anything that we talk about prior to that appeal would necessarily recuse us from deliberating over that. So my concern of having this meeting was I wasn't sure what we were going to talk about with regard to the Chaparral property, if the issue of the landmarking was not part of those discussions. But it can't be part of those discussions, and I just wanted to let everyone know. I had not read your letter, Mr. Cantwell.
Can I reply?
I'm going to ask hard. Matt, as our council, is Paul's rendition or explanation of the law precisely that there...
A couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
First up, there's no harm in the councilmembers having read the letter from Mr. Cantwell. The councilmembers are entitled to read any information sent to them. The key points to bear in mind are that the matter of the proposed landmark designation of the Chaparral School is scheduled for consideration by the Historic Preservation Commission next Thursday, October 12th, at 5:00 p.m. here, and will then, if recommended by the HPC at that meeting or a future meeting, will come to the city council for consideration. When it comes to the city council, the councilmembers will want to be able to participate. To do so, the councilmembers need to refrain from making any comment on the matter that would have taken a position or stated a preference for that final decision. So councilmembers can receive information ahead of time through letters or other communications as any other matter. But in making the decision on the landmarking, when it comes to the council, if it comes to the council, they must make the decision based on what's in the public record for the item and must have not previously taken a position on the matter in public or otherwise before they've heard the material at the public hearing. So the councilmembers should refrain from taking a public position on the landmarking before it comes to them, should it come to them, if the HPC makes the recommendation.
Okay. And then when you say "should it come to the council," you're saying should they recommend a landmarking? But that's not an appeal. That's just simply the continuation of the process.
Correct. The code process under Chapter 8 of Title IV of the Ojai Code provides that the Historic Preservation Commission is to, or may make, a recommendation on a proposed landmark designation. If they so make a recommendation, notice is then provided to the property owner, who can request that the matter be considered by the council at a public hearing. If the property owner makes no request, then the matter is still considered by the council. The only difference is whether it's a discussion item or a public hearing. In either case, in all cases, any proposed landmark designation must come to the city council to make the decision on the landmarking.
Right. Okay. But with regard to comments or receiving information, would it not be also true then if members of the city council went before their commissions and addressed the commissions in advance of the matter coming before the council as a whole? Because I notice that happens quite often.
In addressing the commissions on a matter coming to the council, the councilmembers need to bear in mind the distinction between legislative and adjudicative decisions. On a legislative matter, the councilmembers can say anything they wish because you're making fundamental policy choices, setting law. On an adjudicative matter like this, where there's a property owner with due process rights, such as landmarking or any other land use decision, councilmembers, again, the standard is the same, need to refrain from having stated a position. It's perfectly reasonable to ask questions of a commission or propose points for consideration, but councilmembers must stop short of stating a position.
Position, okay. Jane, did you want to? No, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to assure you that that's not our intent tonight. It's not to discuss the historical. Our concern was that members of the public might see that the two of our bodies are meeting and want to comment on that. And if they had said something that you didn't understand and we understood, we wouldn't, we won't respond to it because it's not part of the agenda tonight, but we just wanted you to understand maybe what they're addressing.
Okay. Those are the procedural rules. Okay, the first thing up, I believe, at this point is what, public comments? Is there anyone? Well, I do have two cards here. Oh, a third one? Okay. And there's a fourth one. It looks like it's working its way forward. Okay. Is Meg Goodman in the audience? Meg, are you out there? Come on down. And Cynthia.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that, thank you for all being here. I'm glad you're considering doing something with that property. I would love to see it actually developed into some sort of community center, you know, preserving the architecture of the school and, you know, or just whatever, honoring the architecture of the school. But, you know, you could have a space for farmer's markets and community, you know, events at the auditorium and speakers and, you know, there's a lot of things you could do with that building. Offices, shops, you know, there's a lot of things that could be developed into next to the skate park, maybe a swimming pool someday. But, and I know it's also got a zoning element for some affordable housing, so it'd be nice to have some senior housing or housing there where people could walk to everything downtown. I just would hate to see it change too much, and I think the best thing the city or the school board or whoever owns it can do, since it's community property basically, public property, you know, you can only sell property once, but you can rent it in perpetuity. So whatever you do, I think you should consider, with the shortage of real estate in this valley, anything the city can own, the city should keep. And you can always make whoever wants to do something with it, do something with it. But I don't think you should give away your barn. You might still have horses in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Cynthia?
Good evening. My name's Cynthia Severs, and I'm probably the only one here that graduated from the elementary school in the '50s. And we just had our 60th high school reunion, which was kind of a bittersweet event because it was always spearheaded by Mr. Ojai, who couldn't be there. I just wanted to say that there are prototypes, process-wise, I'm sure, although I don't know what the process was, for these kinds of things. And I wanted, I didn't know how many of you have been to a McMinniman facility in Oregon or Washington? And how they came to pass, I don't know, but they had, there's a wide variety of them, and they've done some very unique things that incorporate the use of local artists and seem to offer some opportunities for what you're looking for here. And I just wanted to throw that out. Los Gatos, the city of Los Gatos converted their former high school into a very nice facility with shops and restaurants and things like that. So sometimes you don't have to totally invent the wheel. So you might take a look at what the process was that they all went through. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Michael Haley?
I'm Michael Haley. I took a few minutes to re-watch the Chaparral meeting that Bill Wyrick and Sousa had hosted not long ago in June and went through that. And I think that there were a lot of wonderful ideas, but in the end, it's going to come down to money. I went to the breakfast this week for the schools. A lot of you were there. There's no doubt that the schools need money. They're very underfunded, shockingly, in my opinion, in a state of disrepair compared to a lot of other school districts, or even worse. So, and then there was a lot of great ideas, and I wish we could do all of them, but in the end, I think it's going to come down to the money. There's going to have to be money there to make any of those ideas happen. It's got to come from somewhere. I read Michael Shanahan had written something online, I think on Facebook or a blog, and I found myself agreeing with him that, to me, the smart thing to do would be first, let the developers come in, give us ideas. We don't have to commit to any of those. Let's see what they come up with. I think in the final analysis, there's a lot of money to be made in housing. We desperately need housing. It's in a perfect spot. And so I think that should be part of the mix. One of the developers, as mentioned in the paper, said something about 50 to 75 units. I think that's way too big, and they don't need that. They always start there and work their way down. But 15 to 20 housing units, and then you'd have the money to maybe do some of these other ideas. Artists' lofts, maybe the city could put some houses, offices in there that they need. If you had some proposals, you could evaluate them from there. And so I think that's the best idea. Let me see if I forgot anything. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. Bill Miley?
Just adding something to it. Bill Miley, North Signal Street, and as you all know, I've lived here forever. Well, 48 years, okay. So, good evening, school trustees and city council members. It's good to see you together. The value of networking together from time to time is important, and I hope it continues. And you'll notice this is a prepared speech. It was done in Ojai on North Signal Street about an hour ago. So, our three children, Dan, Stephen, and Susan, who are now in their 50s, completed all the grades here, did really well, went to UCSB, and are still doing well, I think. Okay. So, at the top of my priority list for the Chaparral property is affordable housing for teachers and school staff. New governor-signed legislation, just in the last few days, supports school districts in developing such residences. And the city has a housing element which supports that goal. So what are the properties, what are the priorities for the property? Landmarket, hotel it, shops and store it. Doesn't sound right. Recreation activities, services and businesses. How about residential rentals for teachers and non-certificated staff? So here's my logic for the property. Families have kids. Kids need education. Public schools provide kids with education. Classrooms need teachers. Teachers need support staff. Teachers and support staff need homes. Teachers...oh, there we go. And support staff have families to raise within the community. These homes are best sited, in my opinion, within the school district boundaries. Homes need to be affordable, which is no more than 30% of the family household income. Supply of affordable homes must be adequate to recruit the talent, to provide high level of education for the kids. So what's the current and future reality? In my opinion, the adequate supply of affordable homes does not exist. Without teachers and support staff, recruitment will suffer without, excuse me, without, homes for, will suffer, thus diminishing the educational quality and quantity. So what's the pending possible solution? Here's my thought. The school district, through its trustees, with strong support from the city council, plans and builds rental housing for teachers and support staff on the Chaparral property, thus guaranteeing quality teachers and support staff who make this community their family home, homes, enriching educational accomplishments for the kids. And thus, the future is bright, and the Ojai Valley lives on to its glorious destiny. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Carol Smith. Mayor Carol Smith.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. I am Mayor Carol Smith. I was on the city council for 12 years and mayor twice, and my son went to Ojai Unified the whole way through and got an excellent education. I've had some ideas brewing about that property for a number of years, and what I see as a possibility is along Matilah Street, that there is built affordable apartments, two to three bedrooms. Priority will be given to Ojai Unified employees who have children, who will go to Ojai Unified. I don't know what the ADA is right now, if it's $6,000 or $7,000, but we must have employees there, or if they work in the city of Ojai, such as at the inn or whatever. They drive up 33 every day, and their kids go to either Ventura Unified or Oxnard Unified. Let's get those kids educated here. So that would be my priority, priority is people who work in Ojai. Number one would be school district employees. Number two would be anyone in the Ojai Valley. Remember, when we had the Ojai Valley Inn expansion, eventually the settlement was they buy an existing apartment building, which resulted in not a single new unit. These would be, what I have in mind for Matilah would be perhaps like two-story bungalow-type apartments or garden apartments, what they're called, and the entrance and exit would be on Matilah. The building, the main building, the way I see we can finance that is right now is to sell it to, for a hotel owner, who would put up a hotel that would be able to have conferences and businesses meeting. Right now, we have the Ojai Valley Inn. That's it. If you are a smaller business and don't want to or don't have the ability to pay Ojai Valley Inn prices, where do you go? I'll tell you where to go. Behavior Science Technology, one of our big employers, once, they went to the Holiday Inn in Ventura, and that's when they were actually housed in Ojai. We do not have a facility right now for a nice hotel, not five-star resort, but a nice hotel, where people can come for their conferences, business-wise, and maybe stay for the weekend also. So I think that building could lend itself to that type of hotel, and we would have more conference room and business meeting space. We don't have it now. It's the inn or what. My third idea is, of course, move the buses. There is some kind of parking lot utility structure. As you go on Maricopa Highway right after El Roblar, if you go straight up and make a right, there's a big parking utility area there. I don't know if it's OU SD owns it or what, but it would be very easy to move the school buses to that facility, okay? Or make a contract with them. It never looks full to me.
I think they're looking to the county yard.
Is it Caltrans who owns it?
County has the yard beyond El Roblar, the one on the right-hand side going up to the, yeah.
Could it possibly be contracted to rent some of that for the school buses? I don't know. But that's one possible use for that. And what will be put behind the skateboard park? The community pool. It is amazing to me, and I was hoping it would happen when I was in office, that we have no swimming pool. Not everyone in this town can afford the racket club. We have no swimming pool. We have no swimming pool for older people with arthritis or whatever. Where swimming is the best possible exercise. We have no one for the kids. We have no one for a community swim. I see where a community pool could probably be, once it's built, it could be financed by the extra revenue from the hotel and from payment. I mean, it won't be free, obviously. But right now, we contract with, what's the current school? Villanova, for a couple hours in the summer. It's a shame we don't have a community pool in such a hot town. It really is. And I think it's been goal of the council overall that we should have a community pool, but we've got to get those buses moved. The Caltrans lot might be a possibility. It's no more inconvenient to have it there than where it is in the middle of town. So those three uses. A nice, a very nice hotel with room for businesses to have conferences, but not as expensive as the Ojai Valley Inn. And plus, a lot of the people who go to a conference, well, they'll say, "Ojai, how wonderful. I'll stay for Friday night and Saturday night also." A community pool. And number three would be the housing on Matilah, very important. There's so many sources for the housing, to make it affordable apartments for people who now live in Ventura, send their kids to Ventura schools, to move to Ojai. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, that's all the cards I have, so let's get the meeting underway. This, I don't know if the school board and the council, at least in recent time, have met in joint sessions, so in a way, I guess this is call the Historic Preservation Commission and tell them to make this a historic occasion. Because they are, they're currently, they're dealing with this building, so we're adding to that history. Okay. Jane, would you like to begin? My understanding, the main purpose, and when I ran for office, I said that it would be really nice if we in Ojai would consciously talk to each other rather than about each other. And it's so easy to fall into the rumor mill, and a lot of rumors actually turn out to be true, but a lot of them don't. So this is a nice occasion for us to be able to talk face to face and say what's on our minds, okay?
Great. Great. Yes, I would like to just speak to why we requested this meeting and what we hope to accomplish by this time together. First of all, I do want to thank you, council, for agreeing to meet with us. I know there was some indecision about that, but we felt that, you know, the city and the city meetings reach a lot more people than our school board meetings meet. And we felt that it was important to get the right word out, because we do see in the paper and we do see on Facebook that some big misconceptions about the process that the district is going through. And, you know, even one of the, I also went to that meeting that they had at the art center about what to do with the property. And I think what we're trying to let the community know and let you all know is that we understand that that property is central to the community in terms of it's very visible. And we understand that some people have really, really emotional ties to that. But we want to remind people that sometimes there are trade-offs. You have to say, well, am I going to preserve this car that I love if it's not safe to drive my children in anymore? Right? So are we going to preserve every element of that property if it means we can no longer afford the needs of the children in the district? So what this board did was come together and say, what are ways, we're not getting enough money from the state. So what are ways that we can raise money to provide what we feel are the needs of our students? And one of them was to lease the property. Andy will go through the process we went through arriving that, the difference between selling the property and leasing the property. But we felt that it was very important to have open communication with the council because whatever happens with that property will be coming to the council for approval. It'll be coming to the planning commission. It'll be coming to zoning. There's very much, so we really want an open communication. We really want an understanding of what the community wants, what we, with the understanding of what we as a district need. Carol, one thing that went through my head when you said, "Oh, using money from the hotel to help with the pool," and my mind went, "No, the money from the hotel is supposed to help the schools," right? So it's just those little things of reminding each other in a, in a meeting that is a nice, like you said, coming together and being, and it's not, it's not word on the street. It's not rumors. It's not talking about each other. It's together, talking about what are the needs of the district? What are the needs of the city? How can they work together? I certainly look at the skate park, perfect example of the district and the city working together. The city had a big need. The district was able to answer it. I look at the rec department, you know, they, they used to print their catalogs of what they're doing, and the school district would hand them out to all the students. That's a wonderful collaboration. And I think that this project could be, could be the same, absolutely. And to let you all know that we understand the community's involvement and the city's involvement in this project, that it's, although it's a state, I know people think it's a public property in terms of the city, but it's actually a state, it's a state piece, and so it's a little harder. And I know the city, for a while, said, "Well, we would like to lease that property. We would like to do something with it." But the city, you know, the city is in the same position as the district. You know, funds are not that, you know, we can't just do what we wish we could do. So I think it's important that the two bodies come together and work on this project. So I wanted to let that process, or have Andy discuss that process, just why we're talking about leasing versus selling, and what restrictions we have and requirements that we, just the district has, and then talk about the city needs and desires. Andy?
Thank you, Jane. So, all right. I wouldn't be superintendent if I didn't have some paper, and so I do have a handout for you guys. I'm going to send around, and there should be enough copies for those in the audience as well. Really what Jane and I talked about, me being able to discuss, is just making sure that both you as a council, as well as those in the audience and those watching at home, understand where we are in the process from a procedural standpoint and what steps there are going forward, as well as what brought us to this point that we're at. And so before I actually walk through anything that's on this paper, I'll just remind everyone that back in 2008, the board, last time that they actually did request proposals, we received, I believe, a single proposal at that time, decided not to move forward. In 2011, 12, we assembled a 7-11 committee. That's a committee made up of citizens and community members. I see actually a 7-11 committee member here right now, from the second 7-11 committee that we brought together. But ultimately, it's a group of school employees and community members to talk about potentially the disposition of a property. And so during that time, they talked about the potential sale or lease of the district office. The recommendation of that body was to go move forward with the sale or lease. However, when the district began to explore that possibility in 2012, it was still during some of the deepest parts of the recession from a real estate standpoint, and decision was made that really wasn't the right time to be pursuing potential sale or lease. We then, in 2014, had a pretty significant change in the leadership on the board. We had three new board members come on. And so in March of 15, the board came together and had a larger planning session where they really talked about some different priorities. And among those priorities, they talked about, again, coming back to this topic of the district office property. At that time, in a non-committing, you know, general information gathering format, the board did say that they were leaning more interested in a long-term ground lease rather than a potential sale, for I think some of the valid points that were brought up during public comments tonight, that there really is an opportunity to retain greater control over the property, as well as it's a long-term asset for the district by a long-term ground lease rather than a sale. Also, there's a technicality within the education code that requires that the sale of a district, or of a school property, which 414 Ojai Avenue would constitute that, is required that the proceeds go into capital facility improvements for other school district properties. So if we were to sell the property or any portion of the property, that money could not be used to go toward teacher salaries. That could not be used toward buying textbooks or other ways benefit the... That could not be used toward buying textbooks or other ways benefit the, the general operating budget of the district. It'd be required that that go into and really supplement Measure J dollars. Now, there was a period of time where the, because of the recession, the legislature gave a reprieve from that requirement, but to my understanding, that reprieve has now ended, and at this time, again, the prior existing law holds, which is what I just described. Only proceeds from a lease can go into the general fund. In 2015, we assembled our second 7-Eleven committee to look at the elementary school configuration. During that process, ultimately in May of 16, the 7-Eleven committee did recommend to the board to keep all five elementary schools open and in their current configuration. However, the most strongly stated recommendation from that citizen committee was that this really is the time for the district to be looking at doing something with the district office property. And certainly before the consideration of a school closure, the district must explore its options with this property. So that ultimately was a recommendation made by the citizen committee. The board took the topic up in May. Ultimately, in end of September of 2016, they made their determination to accept that recommendation and to accept it as their own. And so in, and now we're actually going to the content of what's on this page. In October of 16, our legal counsel came to a meeting. I really would encourage anyone who hasn't seen that meeting on our website to check out the YouTube video, it was recorded. Our counsel gave an excellent explanation, it's about an hour long though, detailing the exact process.
So you're not going to do that now?
You're not going to go through?
I will not give the full hour overview. But the counsel gives a really good informational item as to what the steps are to ultimately move toward potential lease of the property. So in November of 2016, the board officially adopted a resolution that did four things, and again, this is now on your paper. The resolution officially ratified the 2011-12 advisory committee report and recommendation. It declared the district office property, chaparral property, as surplus. It authorized the offering of the property to various agencies, of which the city was one. And then it also authorized the potential lease through a public bid process. So that took place in November. In the months to follow, in collaboration with both city staff, as well as with other entities, we sent out notices, again, what was statutorily required to take place before being able to move forward in the bid or RFP process. The city was the recipient of one of those notices. That was what, when the city responded stating its interest to exercise its rights, that was what took us into that negotiation period that we were in for a few months.
Can I just interrupt you just for a moment there? I would actually like to offer an apology for not choosing to meet with you and Mr. Wirick Paul about that. I feel like our understanding, we were, we were following some legal processes, and that's where our head was, and we should have listened to a little more common sense and just said, you know, "We don't understand this, but we'll go ahead and meet with you." So I want to apologize for that.
Thank you, Jane. One question that we've had is whether or not the property be subject to Naylor Act. I'm not going to walk through what that is, but there's a brief description on your paperwork there. The short answer is no. The Naylor Act does not apply to this property. So that brings us to what the two processes are for ultimately the potential sale or lease of the property. The default method in education code requires that surplus property be sold through a bid process. So that's, again, the default is a bid where you lay out the terms of the sale or the potential lease, and you end up having an essence in auction, where any developer could come in, and so long as they accepted the terms of either that sale or lease agreement, it was the high bid would be the one that receives the property. Really, the district would lose a significant amount of control over the ultimate developer who was able to win the contract, or win the lease or the sale. The board has stated that they have no interest in pursuing this path. And so because that's the default process, we actually are required to submit to the state a request for a waiver to avoid having to go through the bid process, where that takes away some local control from being able to determine what happens to the property.
Andy, could I, could I ask one question on the?
Sure.
On the default process? You, you just said that you would write the conditions, so part of the conditions wouldn't be what you would expect the facility to be used as in the future? Or is that something that you can't put in the conditions?
That's a great question. So ultimately, through the bid process, you could state anything that you'd like. The reality is, and that's the other piece of this, is the likelihood of there being any success in having a developer accept the terms that you lay forward is incredibly low. I mean, anyone can just intuitively imagine that a potentially multimillion dollar development project, for someone to accept every single term as it's laid out, I mean, I just, I know that Johnny, you have some background in real estate. I can't imagine, in my very brief background, when I worked for a real estate developer, being aware of or a situation where a developer would accept every term with no, no negotiation. And as soon as there was a negotiation, it would take it out of this process. So let's say that the terms that we spelled out said it had to be used for X.
That's all I needed.
Okay.
You clarified that. Once, once you start negotiating, you leave that realm and you enter a different one.
Right. Exactly.
Thank you.
So again, ultimately, the process this district is going to be moving forward with is the RFP process that is able to be accomplished through a waiver. I've identified nine steps that are the next steps in this process. So before we can actually submit to the state our request for a waiver, we have to formally meet with both of our unions. We have to also reconvene the 7-Eleven committee, Steve, sorry to share that with you. We have to reconvene the 7-Eleven committee and have them formally support the decision to move down, or move forward with a RFP rather than with a bid process. And so those are the three local groups that we have to consult and formally receive a statement from that will be accompanying our waiver request to the state. Once we've had those three activities take place, the school board then will adopt a formal resolution stating its intent to apply for the waiver. Then we would have all those materials sent up to the state. Typically, it takes about.
You forgot, we also have to have a public meeting, right?
Correct, correct. I'm sorry. The public hearing is where the resolution would be adopted. Correct, I'm sorry. So yeah, so a public hearing would be required, and potentially into that meeting or subsequent would be when the resolution's adopted. After those things have taken place, the district would submit this waiver request to the state, and it's the State Board of Education, so it's the California Board of Education it goes to. Again, they meet every other month, and so depending on when we actually submit it during their cycle, it might be able to be on their next agenda, but more often, we'll probably be two agendas out. And so three to four months roughly is time that we just have to wait until they approve the waiver. Assuming that the waiver is approved, we would then begin the process of actually putting together the actual RFP. That would certainly be an opportunity for us to be able to receive feedback from the community, as well as this council, as potential items to include in the RFP. Once that RFP's been completed, it will obviously be approved by this board and go out. Typically, the advertised period is at least two to three months. Again, when you think about the complexity of a potential deal, whether or not it's affordable housing, or a hotel, or any other potential use of this property, you have to give a sufficient time for groups and developers to come forward. So again, ultimately, a period of at least two to three months, potentially longer. Then we would ultimately receive those bids, have potential public discussion around what those proposals were. Again, as Jane mentioned earlier, real robust dialogue around, you know, do we accept option A that has a value of a million dollars, or do we choose some option B that maybe is more compatible with this community, but has a slightly lower value to the deal? So that would be the next process. Then ultimately, there would certainly be a negotiation period with that respondent, with the developer. And then what we see common in these type of real estate deals is some period between 12 and 24 months is common, as far as a due diligence period, and that's when they might be coming to you seeking their rezoning, seeking the permitting, seeking other, you know, necessary entitlements to the property. So it was really important that we get that information out, because I think that there, perhaps through district's own mistake in communication, there's been a perception at times that perhaps the district was ready to accept an offer, or had already received proposals. I think that the Ojai Valley News has done a wonderful job detailing two concepts that have, you know, surfaced. But neither of those concepts, one was a hotel, one was a mixed-use development, neither of those were actually formally submitted, and we wouldn't be able to receive it, even if it was formally submitted, because we're not at that process yet. So it was just important, as we have this conversation and the many more that will follow, that everyone is on the same page as far as where we are in the timeline.
So Mayor and Andy, where are you in the process? Have you initiated any of this?
So we were not able to move forward during the period where there was the exclusive negotiation taking place with the city. That period ended in early August, and so at this point, we could be moving forward. We have not begun to actually schedule the meetings with those three bodies, with the, our two unions and with 7-Eleven, in part because of this meeting here. We wanted to make sure that before we continue down this path, that we, again, we're not, you know, operating outside of the, the communication we desire to have with the city. But those meetings will be taking place soon.
Other questions? Okay. Kevin?
Andy and I talked earlier about me possibly adding something, and I just got the.
So I'm going to, I'm just going to add two small things, which we choreographed this. See, you guys are way more interested now, because the information's coming from me. If it didn't come from Andy, you guys would have still been sleeping.
Are you the Ed McMahon? Or Johnny Carson?
Yeah, I'm Ed. Two things. One, it's also important to, to understand, and we've always tried to make this clear for the community and everyone who's interested, that the process that we followed in order to even begin this whole discussion, that is surplusing that property, is itself undoable. I mean, we can, we can just rescind that. We can go back and decide, you know what, it's not surplus, we're going to continue to use it the way we've used it for many years. So even that is something that we can, you know, undo. And the second thing is, and this is probably, you know, goes to what we may discuss next, we have wanted an orderly and predictable process to incentivize people out there who have ideas for the property to come forward when the time comes and make those proposals. So we have, I think, intentionally not wanted to predispose ourselves to say, "It should be this, or it should be that." Because, you know, at the end of the day, the, as Andy said, the, the combination of things that need to be brought to the table in order to even conceive of doing something are a massive amount of, of capital, a really well-thought-through plan, something that would envision using the property as a lease rather than an outright purchase, that would generate income, but at the same time be something that our community could live with, because at the end of the day, it will have to come before the city council for rezoning. And the reason we know that is because right now, the only zoning that is applicable to the property is for a school. So by definition, anything other than a school will require rezoning, and by definition, it will come before this body. So there's all that.
I think one of the things we also discussed is that, similar to some of the ideas that were floated at that meeting and that people mentioned tonight, we, we all have ideas. And we were afraid to put that on the paper, to say, "Okay, we want, you know, a theater and a swimming pool." Because then you have only developers who are interested in those two things. And as we know, you know, there's developers out there with some great ideas, and some architects out there with some great ideas, and if they add something that we thought, "Wow, we, we never even thought of that." And think how that would add to the community. I haven't heard that yet, but you know, that, that was the potential, and that's why we didn't want to go through the, the bid process where we dictated what we wanted on the property, or even what the community, if we had had a meeting and had people, you know, sort of in a democratic process, show what was the most popular idea, we were afraid, we were afraid that would be limiting the potential, the people with potential interest in the property. And we kept going back to the most important thing was to be able to make money off of that. And get along, obviously, with what the community wants, but it has to be both. If the community wanted something that wouldn't raise any funds for the school district, it wouldn't really be helpful to us to disrupt the transportation and the chaparral school, and to disrupt all that for something that didn't benefit the district.
Thank you, Jane. Okay. Other comments or questions?
Just to state the obvious, I think, this is all driven due to dropping student enrollment. Is that, is that correct? Is that correct? Okay, and that's driven by lack of housing, lack of jobs, and maybe the state of the world, whatever, right?
Certainly by housing costs.
Housing cost, okay. So if, you know, we had this grand scheme to change all that, none of this would be, I mean, we could still do something with the property, but that's what's driving it. I mean, just, everything is connected. Okay. Just, all right.
Yes, so absolutely. The biggest factor that the board's considering the decision is certainly the financial condition of the district. And the single biggest driver of what impacts our finances is the number of students that attend the school. Absolutely.
Susan, I think at that meeting you held at, at the Ojai Art Center, one of the things you stood up and said, which I really appreciated, was, "We can't think of this property as solving all the city's problems." You know, people were coming forward with lots of ideas to solve all the city problems, and there's, you know, that's going to take time that you all work on, but I appreciated that.
No, I'm constantly seeing how our decisions impact the schools, impact, I mean, the whole town, everything, you know, constantly looking at the connections. It's, you know, just important to keep in mind in our decision-making process. It's so fundamental, but it's, I thought it was worth stating.
First, I want to say thank you, because I have a much better understanding of the process you're going through now than I did before. But it seems to me that if, if, if a proposal can be tailored around housing, and particularly family housing, then it's going to, it's going to generate more revenue than just looking at a project for the sake of the lease value, because you're getting so much from the state per student, I believe, correct? So if you're getting the lease payments from the developer, and that developer is creating affordable housing so that more families can be in the valley, then you're going to increase the student base, so you're not only going to be getting the lease payment, but also the per capita rate that you receive for the students. So to me, it makes sense that hopefully, however this goes through the RFP process, that affordable housing can definitely be part of the project, because I think it's going to help the school district much more than just a straight lease, because if it's a straight lease, that's all you're going to get, whereas you're not going to get any of the payments on the students. As far as the city's concerned, we'd love to have more affordable housing, but the affordable housing we need is for all kinds of affordable housing, not necessarily affordable housing for families that our students are going to be going to the school district. So, but we're still, we have an overlay on the property for affordable housing, and we would really like to see that happen there.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
So I guess my question at this point, I know that we've talked previously at our, some of our public meetings about, you know, we really wanted to be, this to be a collaborative process, and there may have been some missteps when we viewed the, the city as a potential bidder, which, you know, sort of puts you on the other side of the commercial table. But having cleared that hurdle at this point, I think we're back to, this is something that we want to do in collaboration with the city, because I think frankly, from my own perspective, I'd rather overcome or reach some agreements or understandings upfront, rather than subject a developer to all of that at the end, which I think, as Kevin pointed out, tends to discourage it, and that's not what we want to do. So my question at this point is, is for the council, is how do you see yourselves working with us to do this? I know that, you know, when we talk about an RFP, it's my hope that there will be some broad strokes in there. It's got to say something, right? It's not just, "Here's some land, tell us what you want to do and how much you'll pay us." So I would assume that there would be some broad-stroke things, potentially an affordable housing element, soil permeability, whatever, right? You know, whatever the broad-stroke things are, because I agree with Andy, we don't want to get into prescribing what the project is, because none of us are real estate developers, and we don't want to limit the possibilities. So I see that as a potential opportunity for collaboration with the city and, and other things. But then there's the other issue of potential joint uses, right? I mean, there have been a lot of discussions about maybe the city not necessarily acquiring it, but having some sort of, of interest in something. The community pool, as quixotic as that is, is a, is a perfect example of something that might be like that. So, you know, I know. So, you know, I know where we sit, I know what our plans are, and I know that we've said that we really want to engage the public as well when the time comes, but how do you view your role? It's not really for me to tell you how to participate, and I'm kinda curious as to how you see that occurring.
Well, I'll touch on that a little bit. I think that, I, I think our role right off the get-go is opening up the doors to that facility, to the community, to tell us what they want with it. And as they're telling us, we in turn are passing that on to you. So I see more community engagement, and I think I went to one of your board meetings and said that early on, that you need more. And I think that's what this community wants to hear, is, one, your willingness to open up, and, two, your willingness to listen, because all, all the feedback that I'm getting is, there's not an opportunity to engage them, and there's not enough meetings, and there's not enough, there's not enough. So I would tell you, from the community standpoint, from my perspective, is they want to be heard. And that's our forum, and like, and I agree with you, our forum is larger than yours. We have more people come to ours, we have more people question what's happening in the community, and they, they feel and I, and they know that we are the pinnacle of what goes on in this community. So I would start from there. I would just address the fact that you need to conduct more hearings, you need to conduct more meetings, you need to gather as much information as you can from, from the bottom up, and let that help formulate how you're going to interact with any development or any procedures that you develop moving forward. But I would start there.
And I would add to that, that the interesting element to add on top of that is that the district is within the citi, I'm sorry, the district property is within the city, but the district services more people than the city services. So it's, it's like you, your, your meetings are more, you have a bigger voice, but our, our clientele is a bigger body, because, right, we're all, we're upper Ojai, we're Myers Oaks, and, and that sort of thing. And it's, it's letting the people of the city know more, Randy, so that's helpful, to sort of say, we do hear things through our PTOs and through our, you know, parent, our site councils, and we, we, we are reaching our community of our population, I believe, that we serve, but maybe we're not reaching those who aren't part of the unified district in terms of being a parent or a teacher or a staff person.
I look at it a little bit different than Randy does, although part of what he's saying, I agree with. The city and the community may have a lengthy wish list of what they'd like to see happen there. But you're charged with the responsibility of generating some revenues from that and putting out an RFP. So we're looking at it, sure, we have a, maybe a wish list of what we would like to see there, but then, the next question is, it has to come to us for rezoning and approval, but does that mean if we don't get everything in our wish list, we're not gonna do the rezoning or the approval? And I don't think that's the case. You have to be able to develop the property. Obviously, it has to come back before us for an approval, but it's gonna get, it doesn't come to the city council for an approval. It might for the zoning change, I don't, it may come through the planning commission as a recommendation to the council.
That's correct. The zoning, the zoning decisions are jumping on that one point.
As far as the development on that property, whatever the zoning happens to be, whatever fits that zoning classification is what you're gonna be allowed to do. So it's really more of a planning and strategic, through the planning department, getting permits and things. The community input is helpful for what you want to put in your RFP, but I don't see where we are gonna dictate what you put into your RFP. That's not our role. We can tell you what we'd like to see, but if we don't see it there, it certainly wouldn't change my mind when it came if it was an acceptable use, if it didn't include something that, like a community pool. I mean, I think that's your role, not ours.
Other comments?
Could you clarify something, and maybe this is ignorant, but does everything have to happen all at once? I mean, like the housing element, and then, I mean, can we work on...
In terms of the development?
Yeah.
I think it would be up to the developer, wouldn't it, to say, I'm gonna build housing first, and then I want to build a theater and the pool, or what, you know, whatever, right?
Yeah, so just as we have, say that the ability to continue down this process can be rescinded at any time, I know another point we've been very clear, careful with, is that we're looking at a potential lease of all or a portion of the property, so there's no requirement that every developer moving forward would have to present a proposal for all 7.5 acres.
Okay, that's my question.
It could be a portion of the acreage, it could be the, the proposal that ultimately the board accepted.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would like to add a little bit, just to give perspective on the hurdles of doing something, we, we ran some quick numbers, got some feedback from our staff, that it will probably take about a million dollars for us to move. So all of the great ideas that are out there, that I anticipate use of the facilities, kind of presuppose that the district offices and chaparral are moving out of the premises, but none of that can happen unless we get quite a lot of money. And nobody who has those ideas has offered the money yet. It would be great if they did. So that's why we're going through this process of, okay, you know, our lawyer said you have to take these, I don't know how many steps it was when we started, but 15 or 20 steps, we go through them slowly. You know, I think a big question that I have for the city is, is, is this something that you are going to, I'm not gonna say support, because you don't know what it is, we don't know what it is either, but are you going to make it easy to go through the process, or are you gonna make it difficult to go through the process? And, and I think developers, you know, based on what's happened so far over the course of the last six months, I can't imagine a developer in his right mind who would want to make an offer. And so I think that if we're going to do something, I mean, the default is we don't do anything. And we stay in the, in the building, and it continues to deteriorate, we do our best, we do our best with all our buildings, but our priorities are the schools, and, you know, we have what we have. And I think that there's a sentiment that I hear in some of the meetings, that, well, if we don't bring in a developer, we could do this, or we could do that, or we could do the other thing. I'm not speaking for everybody on the board, I'm just speaking for me, but I don't see that happening. I mean, I just don't see a world where we can't afford to move, and yet we spend a lot of money to do something, you know, we want to benefit the community. I, I think having a school bus terminal right downtown is the dumbest thing in the world. I, you know, I just, I do. I think having all that dirt in the downtown area is not the best use of the property. I think having the maintenance yard, it's a huge maintenance yard. Is that the best use of downtown Ojai property? I don't think so. But, you know, what are our choices? And our lawyers have outlined for us the steps we have to take just to get ideas, and it seems like there's been an active movement on the side of the city, not anybody individually, but certainly collectively, that every time we try to take a step, there's a barrier put up. And, I mean, everybody else has been so positive, I hate to spoil the mood. But, you know, I think that's what the reality is. And so if we want downtown to be a better place, I sure do, I think that all of us around this table need to collectively and individually be supportive of that. If we don't want to have a better downtown area, well then, well, we can have just what we have, and it'll be, you know, well, I'll get by, well, I'll survive. But I think there's a lot of good that we can do, and I hope that we do. I mean, I hope that we at least listen to the ideas that come up, I hope we encourage people with money to come and share their ideas with us, I hope that we do all the things that are necessary to make a better downtown area. I, you know, we actually did have a, this is still historic, but we met about two years ago and discussed some of these items. I thought it was a great opportunity to get together, I, you know, I think that we should get together more. But, you know, I would love, I would love for us to work together to find a, a way to collaboratively move forward and make Ojai a better place. I think that's what, that's the Ojai I fell in love with, is the community working together. And it's the kind of community that I want to live in and be part of, and I think that we can be that. But it's, it's gonna take some work.
Mayor, I was at a, I was at a VCOG meeting last Thursday, and we were talking about reina, and reina numbers, and, and, you know, for most people, that's, you know, the amount of housing that we have to set aside, or land, property land that we have to set aside for future housing. What was interesting is I was listening to four cities talk about their reina numbers and what they were doing to fulfill their needs. And the city of Ventura is the one that sticks, sticks to my mind. Right now, they have like 116 housing units that they're gonna be developing shortly. And their affordable housing percentage of that was, they're saying 15%, but my quick math said it was 10% or less. So one of the conversations, one of the questions I asked the CDD director of Ventura was, why aren't you asking for more affordable housing in your developers? And the feedback was, well, we're at the mercy of the developers. So what I want to be clear to this, to, to anyone listening is, we are, this community is in control of how it's developed. And I didn't buy that, that, that the city of Ventura is not in control of their numbers. I believe that we are, that we're in control of what we would like to see done on the school board property. And that starts, obviously, with the school board, working through the community, gathering its input, and working through the process. But when I heard that the city of Ventura was at the mercy of a developer or developing bodies, I just cringed. And I just wanted to bring that up tonight. We are all in this together, and we all want the heart and soul of this community, that's 7.5 acres. If you want to use the word develop, use it, if you want to say repurpose, use it, however you choose to look at it. It's the heart and soul of this community, of this town, and it's also the hub of this valley. So all of the external influ, outside entities that you talk about, that you guys govern more than we do, they still come to the hub of this valley, and the hub is downtown Ojai. And the community wants to see whatever is done there, done with a great deal of respect and done properly. So you are in control, and we are here to support you.
Michael?
I appreciate you saying that. I think it's a recognition of, of what we were kind of saying earlier, that the reason we chose to go down the RFP path as opposed to the bid path is because we don't want to foreclose options, we don't have all the answers, we don't want to pretend that we do, and that we want to maintain as much control as possible. And I, and I hope that that reassures the city as well, because we don't intend to exercise that control carelessly or negligently. But I want to push back just a little bit, not push back, maybe, maybe challenge, I don't know, a little nicer word I'm not finding, but on, on your answer to my question in terms of the council's participation, because we can hold a lot of public hearings, and I think we intend to do that. I know that before we finalize any kind of language in an RFP, it's probably a good idea to have more conversation, and, and a wider conversation, maybe better advertised or something, so that we can get...
Maybe even a joint session.
Maybe even a joint session, exactly. But I am curious, because I know, I, I'm hoping, and, and again, I'm not, not really a great politician, so I don't know all the ins and outs, but I'm hoping that the city, as embodied in its council, can, can model a more supportive behavior than just kind of sitting back and waiting for us to bring you a proposal. Not to say that, you know, you're gonna signal anything that would be approved or disapproved, but I would really like to hear the city's priorities and issues, and what the city's wish list, understanding that that's all it is, it has nothing to do with what the city ultimately approves or disapproves, because that's a whole different conversation. But I think there's a role for each of us to play in terms, as, as community representatives, in terms of what we would like to see or not see, because I think that's equally important, is what do we not want to have on that property, in, in some kind of a dialogue, and maybe it is another joint session that's embodiesing, embodying a public hearing as well. But I would hope to get more participation from y'all than just, you know, patiently waiting for us to hand you something to decide. With respect, I...
Well, I think, Michael, that comes from, you know, the, the city, I think the city, what we're not aware of as board members, is that the city has, I mean, like the, what was it, the, not Clean Streets program, but...
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets. You know, there are city priorities that are important to the city, and I think that, I don't know that, you know, obviously, the, the city's not focusing on schools, and they don't, that's our job. So I think what I hear from you is that, you know, it would be helpful to us to hear, hear the city say, well, what we're interested in is affordable, some affordable housing, right? That's how the city can help us, is, is speaking in terms of what, what are the city's needs that might be answered by that property, and that helps us with the RFP in the future, and brings to the table developers who are gonna develop something that the community wants, not something that they don't want, maybe, perhaps, I don't know.
Well, the main thing, you know, we have certain priorities, and one in particular is dictated to us, while we have a definite need for affordable housing, you know, we do, we're dictated by the state as to how much land we have to have available. That, we really have little to do with, but that's something that's very important to our community, so we have an overlay on that property for affordable housing, so obviously, the city has an interest in affordable housing there. But beyond that, we get what is there from the community. They don't come up with these ideas ourselves. I don't, I, I mean, staff hasn't brought to my attention, or I, before the council, that we're looking at that property to move our, our, our city operations to, I mean, I don't know anything about that. But do we have a, development has to be reasonable, but we can't dictate what's there. You said, what wouldn't we want to have there? Off the top of my head, if a development makes sense, there isn't anything that, that I would say we shouldn't have there. I can't imagine anything...
Pardon me, Paul, just saying, Susan, do you have to excuse yourself?
I do, because it's so riveting.
Oh, okay, well, you're welcome to stay, I just wanted to be sure you have the oppor-
I'll go home and watch the video as soon as possible, and I look forward to see you tomorrow at the brown bag lunch. Thank you, I hope we meet again soon.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Paul.
I can't think of one thing that I know of that would be absolutely off limits, as long as it's legal and it's part of our, you know, zoning code. I mean, I, I can't imagine anything. We, we accommodate business, we accommodate housing, we accommodate retail, we accommodate recreation, we accommodate transportation. So I can't, I honestly can't think of anything that, in my mind, would be totally something that we would say, oh, absolutely not, that is so objectionable, we would never approve that.
Nuclear power plant.
Wild animal park.
So I, I guess maybe my other council members would have something that they would be absolutely objectionable to.
No, I don't have any, I'm, I'm not gonna address that, but I, what I would address is, in the process that you're going through, is looking outside of the box of what we as a community develop right now. And, you know, we're doing a lot of wineries, and we're doing a lot of restaurants, and there's a need for a different type of, of economy here. So to me, it's an opportunity, as you're looking for development, what are you looking for? That might help you to actually put a lit, put together a, a think tank or a committee, but what are you looking for, not just, not just the community, but what are you? And what other types of businesses are there out there that we could bring into the community that could be accommodated in that space? Because what I'm hearing...
the community that could be accommodated in that space? Because what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, the economy that we have right now isn't sufficing anymore, and that people would like to see a change. So, for me, you can't cold turkey what we're doing. What we need to do is address it in an orderly fashion. And here's an opportunity to start. Let's start looking at other businesses that we'd like to bring into this community. And what could those businesses do in that 7.5 acres? There's an opportunity here. And I think we need to challenge ourselves and look at it that way.
Yeah. If I might jump in, in response to what Michael was saying, you know, what is our role? And our role is community development, and their role is education. What, what I'm hearing, and just so Thane isn't the only wet blanket here tonight, I'm going to join him a little bit, with what I think, as a former developer and builder, is just a touch of reality. I'm hearing from the community, and I know my, personally, I would like to see, you know, low, low-impact, public services, recreation, historic preserve, all those things, which are perceived as roadblocks, and obviously are. Because as a developer, all of those things constrain what's going to be on the property. I hear the school district say, we have a revenue problem. We need money, not money to, for capital improvements, but money, well, you will need in order to move, but money for operational, which is always the hard money to come by. Because then you're subject to the inflation and all the pressures of labor and the other issues. We, on the other hand, hear most of the things being requested are really, you know, things that are liabilities, cost. That's generally what government, or at least general government gets. Housing, okay? Housing can be profitable. But subsidized housing, which is the way you make housing affordable, is less profitable and possibly not profitable. So, it seems to me, and I don't, this may have already been done, but without, you know, Randy's, you know, makes good points. How can we answer the question, what do we want there, and tell everybody, you know? But you can tell whose money is being spent by the way they're spending it, as they say. In this case, it's not even money we have, but everybody's trying to figure out what to do. I don't know, is there 50 acres over there? I don't think so. But I have heard enough recommendations that basically could challenge the Ventura City Central Park over there on Kimball. And it would be great. But all of that is a financial loser. That isn't going to generate money. That is going to increase overhead and ongoing operations. And, and the city isn't in a position to step in any more than you are. You're trying to get out of that role, because you have a potential asset, that is, if you can do something with it, which is currently really a liability of sorts. You have to pay for it as it deteriorates. So, it seems to me that step one in development is pro forma, or business plan. Somebody has to, and maybe you've done this, but somebody has to sit down and say, as the school district, you know, when, when I, I'm not an expert at this. But when we would do pro forma, they, the, the first rule of development is real estate. Land is a residual. That is, the value of the land is only based upon what's left over after you've incurred all your costs for the development and added in your profit. You guys are looking for the profit, and we don't know how much it's going to cost to do the development. So, there is no real answer to that question yet. So, one would have to say to themselves, what I would look at in a development is sales value. What is the sales value of the end of the project that will then generate the profit or the income we're looking for? So, if a pro forma or a business plan is done on that basis, saying, how much you need, you need a million down in order to clear the area, then you need so much a year to make all of the pain and suffering we're all going through worthwhile. And I don't know what that number is. When I talked with Hank before, it was a fairly sizable number. So, somebody has to figure out what kinds of things, in a place like Ojai, would generate that number. Because if it isn't generated, you know, you're going to go to all this trouble for nothing. On the other hand, if what it takes to generate that is totally unacceptable to the community, the council's role is going to be, you know, probably not to be real helpful on something, because the, the profitability of it, it depends on the intensity. So, maybe there's something in between. But it just seems like, in order to answer some of these questions, that needs to actually be done by someone, not necessarily publicly, but just as a, as a business deal. You sit down and you figure out, what is the sales value and revenue stream that will be generated from whatever kind of project? Is it likely to work? Certainly, swimming pools are not profitable. You know, the universal solvent is water. Not a lot we have around here, at least in the positive sense. But to be building, you know, an aquatic center at this point, where we're having water problems, I guess it would be considered to be a reservoir of sorts. But I've talked to the city of Sami. They built a wonderful facility about 25 years ago. And my God, the, the cost of replacing the pumps, and all of the corrosion and what have you. So, that's something that is a loser, that is done for the benefit. It's a hot area. I think what the mayor was saying, the former mayor was saying, it makes, makes sense. In a really hot area, you'd have one. But then somebody else then has to generate, whether it be tax money or gate receipts, to support those kinds of things. You'd be lucky if you broke even, which doesn't help the school district. Okay. Sorry, that's enough of my wet blanket speech. But I, I do think that's where it's got to start, in order for our conversation to get more specific, is what kind of things are envisioned that would generate the kind of money you're going to have to have. And then we kind of sort of see if we can figure out away from there.
And if I could add to that, I think the approach we've been looking at is, let's see what somebody's willing to do. Because we can do some rough numbers. We know that a couple of developers have come to us in years past, and they thought something might pencil out. So, there might be a possibility. But, you know, whether it makes sense depends totally on what they would want to do.
Sure.
If it's a housing project, you know, that's one calculation. If it's a hotel project and a conference center, that's a different calculation. And there are so many different calculations to do. You know, I, I was thinking that, you know, we get to the point where we make it, I, appetizing for a developer to come and make some offers, we get several offers on the table. And then that would be a great time to have a joint meeting and, and think, well, you know, which, which of these kinds of things makes sense for our community? Or is there a way to tweak these? Or could we do that with part of the property, and this with part of the property? The, the difficulty is before, and that's why, you know, I think we've been pushing to try to get to the point where we can even get those offers, because everything's pie in the sky until we get to the point where somebody's willing to put up money for something. And then we have something to talk about. Then we have a lot to talk about. And we figure out, you know, does that make sense for our community?
Yeah. So, what you're saying is, is that the, the thinking, or at least your thinking, is, is that you go through the process, because as Kevin said, you can always back up. Is that correct, Kevin? That's what you were saying, that if, if you got to a certain...
I'm here to confirm that.
The, the idea is, then, is to have some interested party who would be willing to spend a little money, or at least a little expertise, you know, Castle &amp; Cook, or somebody who would then look at it and say, well, okay, here are two or three poss, you know, general ideas of what you might do that would make economic sense. And then you could start at that point. I mean, that's a way to do it, in order to not end up being in the development business and having to incur those costs.
Mayor, I also have one, just, just one other thing to add. And by the way, I'm not telling anyone what to do. But I don't think any of the school board members, much less the council members, are developers. But I know that there's quite a few developers...
Well, not anymore. Yeah.
But I, but I know that there's quite a few quality developers in this community. Again, we've solved a lot of problems on this council by going outside of it and seeking public input and support and knowledge. And that might be a suggestion for you, is that you contact some people in this community, get them together, and have them maybe help you write a pro forma. Or look at it from a development perspective, from, with a developer who does it for a living, not school board members, or attorneys, or whoever we are.
I think that's what happened with the two projects that ended up in the paper. And people thought that, that was a done deal, and we were trying, kind of choosing between those. And so, we were a little hesitant, you know, I mean, we certainly, we certainly...
Well, I'm talking about what, what Mayor Johnson, Johnson said, which I agree with 100%. And again, having a pro forma doesn't mean you're going to get bids. What you're doing is writing what you're, what your expectations of that site are. And, and again, even someone writing a bid or a proposal to you doesn't know what your needs are until you tell them. So, your pro forma would tell you that. We want 30% affordable housing. We want this. We want that. We need this. We need a million-dollar move-in, move-out expense. You know, it just seems like if you started from that perspective, that it might benefit you in the long run. But...
But I understood Thane to be suggesting that that is the way the school district is trying to approach it, just not have to put the upfront expertise and money into it, and maybe get someone else to invest that. Is that, is what I'm hearing, Paul?
Mr. Mayor, I, just to, to kind of reiterate what you said, but in, in a little bit different way, but I totally agree with it. Until you decide what it is you need, the million dollars upfront, the million and a half dollars upfront, 2 million upfront, and how much you need on an annual basis for lease payments to, to do whatever you're going to do with it, you can get the greatest projects in the world presented. But if none of them are going to generate that kind of money, you're never going to accept them. So, I think that's the first thing that I'd be looking at, is what is it going to take? And then I would ask for every proposal that could possibly come in, that's going to generate that kind of revenue. You might not get one. You may get one that's a 16-story office building. But you're going to at least get whatever it is on the table that's going to meet your needs. Doesn't mean you have to take it. Doesn't mean that you even have to consider it. But at least it's going to tell you what, what's out there that is available, that somebody's willing to invest in, in order to, to meet your needs and their needs. But if you just put out, oh, we want, we want this, and we want that, we want affordable housing, you, you don't know what you're going to get. Because it's really not important at the onset, to me, as to what's going to go there. It's to make sure that you're going to be getting the revenues that you need to support what you want. Because if you don't, you're not going to do anything. And once you see what somebody's willing to do, you can always say no, and we can always say no. But until you have somebody to say, okay, we'll give you the $2 million upfront, and $5 million a year, or whatever you need, then, you know, you're just spinning your wheels. So, that's the way I'd look at it. Decide what you want, see who's willing to pay it, and what they're going to do to, what they're going to, what they're going to ask for in order to do it. And then you decide whether it's something we want or we don't want.
If I, if I could push back a little on that, I, in my experience in business, you never negotiate against yourself. And so, I think that there are some bare minimums that we need. We understand, we've made those public. But I don't think that it makes sense for us to put out a number and say, this is what we're looking for, because we'll never get more than that. I mean, if I were a developer, I wouldn't pay more than, you know, if somebody's selling a house, the only reason you pay more is if there are other bidders. But in an RFP process, it's not clear. And so, I, you know, I, I think it's important, the things that you said that I think are really important, is that we have to have some idea of what we're doing. And we have looked at that. But I, I think that to put out a number might be counterproductive, if we're looking for the best deal we can get. And then, once the proposals are on the table, we would have a very tough decision to make. Is that enough? Is that enough to go through the process? Is that enough to give up what we have in order to send that money to the schools to educate kids? Or are we going to be better off just continuing what we're doing? But, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of ways to look at it. That's why the more voices around the table and the more expertise available is fantastic. I love this.
Well, I think you'd still have a minimum, I mean, you know, the minimum requirement for a project. If you decide that, then, once you get a project in that you like, you don't have to think about whether or not it's going to be enough. Because you've already made that decision.
Yeah, we just don't make it public.
Yeah, right. I agree. You don't want to...
You just don't make it public.
You know, it's, it's interesting. I was thinking about, I said I'm not a developer, but the reality is I am. I develop land. And it's interesting, one of the first questions I ask prospective clients is, do you have a budget? And the first, and, and a lot of times, I get that pushback. Well, if I tell you how much my budget is, you're going to design to it. And I'm not going to have any money left over. And then, and, and the whole idea behind a budget is so that, when you do meet with them, and they start telling you all of the things they want, and you're, you're giving them that, that on-the-site bid, you know, and you're going, well, you know, you want the playground, you want the swimming pool, you want the affordable housing, and you want the hotel, and you want all of this for a million dollars. Well, guess what? Five of them have to go. So, and I said this the other night, Mr. Johnson, Mayor Johnson, I know he laughed at me, but, you know, I help people dream the dream, and then what you do is you guide them into reality. So, my thoughts on this is, you guys need to dream your dream and get your budget, and then let the developers bring you back to reality. But it's different ways of looking at it. But I, I, I think what you're doing is admirable, and I believe, truly believe, that you all are acting in the best interests of this community. So, I look forward to more of these conversations.
One thing I think is important to, to bring up, is that, you know, we each speak for ourselves, as you guys do. And when we vote, we, we find out how the vote goes, and we learn what the school board has done. We call it the school board acting, but it's really, you know, five people voting. I, I want to say, at least from my own perspective, that it has always been my view, and I, and I think it has always been my sense among those on the school board, that this decision is, is driven by community concerns. And, and so, I don't want people to be left with the impression that the school board is just bean-counting, and whatever, you know, proposal comes forward, as long as it meets some financial criterion that therefore were in favor. And, and I think it's really important, and, and this kind of goes also to the frustration of being a school board member, that we, we don't get, I don't think, as much action, as much interest as we should. Because the truth of the matter is that we're integral to this community. And it is true that our boundaries are greater than the city of Ojai. But we recognize that a thriving, thriving community has to have thriving schools, in particular, public schools. So, the last thing we're going to do as a body is alienate the people of Ojai. You know, we're, that's not going to happen. We're not, we're not going to just go rogue and decide to do some crazy thing that the community doesn't support. I mean, there, there very well may be some, you know, subtle questions, or even not subtle questions, that, you know, reasonable people can differ on. But overall, you know, we're all about buy-in. We're all about people, you know, supporting the schools. I mean, frankly, you know, this community supported us with, with the last bond measure, for which we're grateful. And, and, you know, we're, we know that, that the reason our kids have a great school district currently is because of community support. And we hope that this process actually will bring us closer together.
So, I'd just kind of like to pull it together a little bit, and say that I think this was helpful. And what we wanted was to help you understand what our process is, help the community understand. I think we've got some great ideas from you on some processes that we should begin on. And I think my personal thought on, Michael and Thane's, what, what I would like from the city is that, what we've gotten tonight, which is that vocal support, you know, you're on the street, just as much as we are. You are hearing people in council meetings, and you can say, you know, we're, we're, you know, we, we're going to wait, you know, we, we hope they come up with something great, too. We believe the school board wants the best for the district, rather than we believe, not that you have said this, I'm just saying, in a contrast, you know, we think the school board is going rogue, and we have to be careful. You know, if you can help us reach the community in saying, this is a community project, this is important to the community, and we hope we can all continue to work together like we did tonight. I think tonight was, personally for me, it was really helpful, and, and I, I liked it.
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, Australia again.
I know. Very verbose, I know. I, I hear that, that you do hear the people on the street. And I just would like to... I hear that you do hear the people on the street, and I just would like to remind you that the people that come to city council are not necessarily the families in town, and that we do hear from the families, I would say, at a greater rate, and have more contact there. And I would just like to put out there that I, my hope from this meeting is that the city and the school board can collaborate, not just on this project. I really feel strongly, I don't know how much you understand about the funding, and I know Suzha said that with declining enrollment, that is our big problem, however, we are just barely hitting back to our pre-recession funding, and we've kind of hit a wall. And Ojai doesn't really, we fall into a demographic void where we aren't going to be funded well in the future compared to Oxnard and Ventura. And I'm not sure how aware you are of that. And I would like to hope that regardless of how this goes, that the city council makes families a priority and supports the school district and other endeavors, that there can be other collaborations.
I think of the park, that draws families. So, decisions you guys make that draws families to the community is a great positive for us.
Well, what was interesting is when you brought up complete streets, and you talked about how they, how they interact with the school system, and what we're trying to achieve in some of our complete streets projects is actually safe bicycle lanes to get children's to your schools or to our schools. And by the way, I do consider your schools our schools, and I think we all do.
Okay. Is there anything that we've missed? Steve?
Like Board Member Griffin, I just wanted to take an opportunity to at least get one comment in before the meeting closed. I just wanted to very quickly point out that the city and the district have worked very well cooperatively in the past, and I think we're going to continue to work very cooperatively together. One of the areas, I know everybody would love to have the grand dream of the community pool, but I just, I do want to point out that we are back using the high school pool as, through the city's recreation program, which I think is a real good benefit for folks, and a little bit closer for people to be able to use that. Sure, we would all love to have a bigger, larger facility, but with that, there comes a lot of costs and expenses with that. So, at least in the meantime, I think we've done very well to try to maximize that. And then the other thing that I just simply wanted to point out was that when the district had lost its after-school care program, or that had to go away, we worked cooperatively with the district to pick that up and run that through our recreation department, and it's been very good for the city and good for the recreation department. It helps feed folks into the system. So, again, some good opportunities, and just wanted to share those examples. Thank you.
Is that it?
From my end.
Okay, from my, I think from our end.
Do we have to just sit here until 10:00? Or can we?
No, no, 10:30. But if you like, the rest can be excused, Thane, and you can stay after with me, okay? All right, okay. If there's no further business, the meeting stands adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.